Hi, welcome to the Village U. Can and Board of Trust Means regular meeting of May second, twenty twenty three. Please join in the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States and to the Republic for which it stands, on which it stands, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you.
Under the table ten.
I won't, let's be just.
Okay, first on our agenda is approve the minutes. Um, I am going to do something a little bit differently because we have one, two, three, four. We have a eight minutes, uh, meeting minutes that we have to approve, so I'm going to ask the board now if they have any questions, comments on any of the board meetings.
No comments, um, it may be eight.
It's eight, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Eight or seven, I mean, like said.
There's a few, I just didn't want to go through each.
Eight.
No comments.
We're good, Mr. Anthony?
Yes, I have my problem.
Alright, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of February twenty eighth, workshop meeting, March seventh, board meeting, March twenty eighth, workshop meeting, April fourth, special meeting, uh, April fourth, organizational meeting, April fifth, um, special meeting, April fifth, budget hearing, and April seventeenth, special meeting. I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, thank you. Any comments from the floor, agenda items only? No, okay. We'll save those for later. Okay, under new business, um, we are going to be, uh, calling for a public hearing on June sixth, the most regular board meeting. And it's, uh, gonna be a resolution on the proposed wetland zoning tests and map amendments. The C one, C two overlay district for the development of unimproved property located on Albany Post Road. Um, it's designated on tax and act of Portland, section forty-three sixteen, block three, lot sixteen, sixteen A, sections forty-three twenty, block two, lot two. So this is the AMS development behind the hardware store. So I have a resolution to read, and then, uh, if there's any questions, I'll do it on a question. Uh, whereas on our ballot, January tenth, twenty twenty-three, representatives of Buchanan Development AMS LLC, the applicant did submit a facially complete petition to the village of Buchanan Board, especially the village board. For amendment to the zoning map of the village Buchanan amendments, the zoning code of the village Buchanan generally affecting the C one, C two overlay zoning district, the proposed zoning amendments. And whereas Article thirteen, section two eleven fifty-three of the code of the village Buchanan provides for the process and procedures for amendments to the village zoning code when the applicant has provided the graph of the proposed zoning amendments along with other supporting documentation. Whereas in relation to the proposed zoning amendments, the applicant will also seek from the village board a special permit to allow for the application of the C one, C two overlay district to the subject site and a site plan approval for the redevelopment of the subject site in multifamily residential development, collectively with the proposed zoning amendments on proposed action. Whereas on January twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, at the regularly scheduled meeting of the village board, um, the board did review and discuss the proposed zoning revisions and did declare their intent to act as lead agency as required by the state environmental quality review act, the CEPR, and did circulate the proposed zoning amendments and other supporting documentation to a list of identified interested and involved agencies. Whereas on March seventh, twenty twenty-three, after the required time had passed and having received no objection to their being lead agency from the other interested involved agencies, the village board did declare themselves lead agency and did discuss the respective contents of an expanded environmental assessment form to be provided for the village's board's consideration. Almost done. Whereas on April twentieth, twenty twenty-three, the applicant submitted an expanded EAF with supporting documentation related to the proposed action, which was reviewed by the lead agency. Now therefore be resolved that the village board, as required by New York State Village Law and the Code of Village Buchanan, does hereby schedule a public hearing on the proposed zoning amendments for June sixth, twenty twenty-three, and thus hereby direct the village clerk to circulate the proposed zoning amendments and supporting documentation to the village Buchanan Planning Board for review and recommendation as required by the Code of Village Buchanan. And be it further resolved that the following agencies identified by the expanded EAF and using all due diligence are interested or involved agencies for the proposed action and should be provided a copy of this notice and expanded EAF. So these are other agencies, uh, we have to send to. Uh, one is the village Buchanan zoning board, town of Portland, city of Peekskill, village of Protonon Hudson, Westchester County Department of Health, Westchester County Department of Planning, New York State Department of Environmental Conservation, New York State Department of Transportation, Buchanan Engine Company, Berflank Fire Department, Montrose Fire Department. And be it further resolved that the village board hereby directs that a public hearing notice be circulated among the interested and involved agencies together with a copy of this resolution and the expanded EAF, and that any correspondence on this matter be directed to the village administrator's office, two thirty-six Tate Avenue, Buchanan, New York. So. Whoops. I'm a motion to approve this resolution, can I have a second?
Okay.
On a question?
If you want Dave to go over the process, it's up to you.
You wanna go over the process again?
Okay.
Thank you, Chris, I appreciate that.
You think?
My pleasure. Uh, so last week, um, in York session, uh, the village board reviewed the expanded environmental assessment form and discussed it, uh, with the applicants represented as present. Um, there were several comments, um, from the board uh, relative to, uh, adding some additional information, uh, to clarify the proposed action, uh, to clarify some of the, um, uh, the graphics that were presented, uh, there was a request to include the, uh, proposed zoning text amendments, including, um, changing the threshold from five acres to four acres, and that's now the proposal of law.
And there's one on the wetlands, there's that small change.
Small change in the wetlands as well.
Yeah.
So there were, um, a number of findings that were requested the applicant, uh, provided, um, in slightly modified, uh, expanded environmental assessment form to respond to those comments, um, least the village has. And so, um, it's important to know that at this point, um, you, I think the village board feels that there's enough information and it's, um, sufficiently presented to allow the public to review and begin commenting on the proposed action. Um, so that's, that your, um, discussion tonight and the resolution uh, would set the public hearing and allow for the public and the other interested and involved agencies to, uh, begin formally submitting their comments. And it provides for the circulation of the expanded environmental assessment form, which is a requirement under CEPR. It provides all of the, uh, the agencies, uh, interesting and involving agencies that we've identified to this point, an opportunity to review what's been proposed and to comment, uh, directly to, uh, the board, you know, the resolution. Uh, so that is a, uh, a summary of the process that we let now.
Um, just one third.
In, prior to the, uh, public hearing, um, your board, the consultant staff, other village staff may provide comments in advance of the June sixth meeting. Uh, so that's, uh, again, we wanted to make sure that there was enough information and sufficient detail, uh, but not necessarily have every single question or comment thought about or, or asked at this point, it is important to get the public's, uh, input on this proposed action.
Alright, on a question?
Just take one packet, we pass them on, please.
I did, but what happened is they got all, like, with the paper clips, they got all, like, kind of jumbled off, that's why I was having a little difficulty.
Yes, exactly.
Right.
I think Theresa might have gave you all the stuff a mistake there.
Yeah, that's why I said it was like, it was kind of all going all kinds of ways, so.
Yeah.
Whatever I don't have, I'm grabbing the hands.
That's it. This is what you feel. Yeah.
I'll see. I'm missing a bunch of stuff.
You will.
That's okay, we'll figure it out.
All, all this was provided electronically.
Yes, it was.
Providing the hard copy.
Sure, right.
That, that's the presentation.
Okay.
Obviously, the, um, if the board, um, wants to spend a little public hearing, document, maybe a, uh, we're saying, uh, making sure that the documents are made available on the village web seven. And again, comments can be directly to the administrator's office and, uh, and as a the whole public hearing.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, so we asked for, I asked for, um, second, and then I also asked for, uh, on a question, if anybody has a question on anything before we schedule the public hearing.
Good.
Okay, we're good, all in favor?
Aye.
So, public hearing? Thank you. That was easy, huh?
Second.
Second.
That's. What, what's so true? Is it June so?
No.
June six.
June second. I was, I was second to the motion. Public hearing to June second.
Yes. We have to schedule.
Thank you. Perfect.
One, anyone interested in commenting, please come in for the public hearing. Alright, the next is a resolution authorizing an intermeastful agreement with the town of Portland for the use of the northern tier transfer station. I have another, uh, resolution, someone here. Okay.
We think.
Good night, good night, thank you.
Be well.
Whereas the town of Portland has entered into an agreement with the county of Westchester Solid Waste District, which allowed the county to construct a transportation on property owned by, upon Roehoak Road. And whereas the town of Portland has previously entered into agreements with the northern tier municipality to allow them to utilize said transportation. Whereas the villagers' agreement with the town of Portland for the use of the northern tier transportation, Roehoak Road facility will commence on April first, twenty twenty-three, for a six-year period. And whereas the fee for this service will be eight hundred and twelve dollars per month for the period of, uh, April first, twenty twenty-three, through, uh, March thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. And at that yearly rate, plus a cost of living adjustment for each year thereafter equal to the allowable levy growth fact of the New York State Tax Act. And whereas the village president uses, utilizes this and desires to continue to make use of this. Now therefore be resolved that the village mayor's hereby authorized to sign the intermeastful agreement with the town of Portland for the use of the northern tier transportation, Rosewood Road Facility for the period between April first, twenty twenty-three, and March thirty-first, twenty twenty-nine. On a motion?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, wow, moving on along. So this is something, this is something we do every year. Um, there are unpaid water bills, um, what we do, so this wasn't the last, the, the water bills that we're just due. This is last year's water bill. For that, okay. So, um, what we do is at, at point, we, um, they're levying onto our tax, onto the village tax bill. So, um, like I said, we do this every year, I'm gonna make a motion, um, that we, um, any unpaid water charges to be reliving to the tax bill, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this is something we do every year too, we hire seasonal help. And, um, and I think going forward on our meetings, I, I just wanna mention something now. We had the first two were resolutions, and going forward, what I'd like to do is have resolutions for each item. Because what I'd like to do is have different board members start reading the resolutions, so I can, I can split it up and have everybody involved. We'll give them all to you.
I'd like to help, yeah.
So, um, I, so like I said, every year we hire seasonal help, and I'm going to make a motion, um, to authorizing the employment of seasonal help at the rate of fifteen dollars an hour. And for this year, um, for highway, we have, um, Marty Stewart, Sean Stewart, William Roberts, Joseph Redman, and for the sewer treatment plant, we have Jake Izzo. So, can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So when do they start, Marcus, do they start like this week or?
Timeline, what a payroll, what do you think you might have on? Next week or the week after?
The week after.
The week after, yeah. Gotta, gotta, gotta get this.
Is blowing like crazy, because they're, they're a big help with the grass.
That's the week of what?
Um. May nineteenth? Okay. Especially after all the spring and when the grass is. Until all the thirty days. Okay, alright, cool. Alright, the next, uh, we do this every year, and, um, what we have to do are budget transfers, interfund transfers, and we, you know, to prepare for our audit.
That time of year again, already.
That time, yeah, we just, yeah, it just, it just goes by so fast, I know. So I'd like to make a motion for the treasurer, um, to make all required budget transfers, interfund transfers, adjustment and amendments to close the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year as required for the annual audit. And I have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is, is George on?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm trying, I'm trying to get him before right now. Okay, can you join? Okay, we're ready for you, thanks. Okay.
Do it later.
Yeah, you have a copy, you wanna, yeah, you wanna sign it?
Yeah, just so we don't forget to have it signed.
Girls are bored, see tonight?
Then we have to worry about anything later.
But on pizza, hit the lottery and I disappear, right?
You're talking to.
I know, why?
You got it? Are you, there, there you go.
So we're waiting for our engineer to get on.
That's it, thank you.
That's it, what's that?
Thank you, sir.
I'll pass it back.
So what we're gonna be talking about when our engineer gets on are, um, the bidding for our roads for the twenty twenty-three roadwork, so we're very happy to say that we have quite a bit of roadwork that we'll be doing this year. And then also, um.
He's on.
He's on. Hi, George. How are you, can you hear us?
Audio still connecting. There you go, George, George, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
Always making me dizzy, what's we doing? Yeah, I'm getting dizzy.
I think he's on, hi, George, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, yes, sir.
Good, great.
So thank you for joining us tonight, um, just wondering if you can give us a review, we're talking about, um, that you, um, preparing specs and advertising for the bid for our roadwork this year. If you could go over that and, uh, tell us which roads again, I know we discussed it at the workshop last week, but.
Sure, um, uh, Bannon Avenue, uh, Henry Street. Uh, I don't have the memo in front of me, Henry Street was the other one, and.
Broadway.
Burke.
Part of Broadway and Burke, and then we talked about a fourth one, which was Gallagher. And we took a drive of Gallagher and we ran some numbers, and there are two things that came out about Gallagher. Um, the curbs are not in that great a shape, and I look back in our records, we paved that road about ten years ago, uh, roughly, the whole road, and we're coming up on, and back then, we didn't replace, uh, we replaced maybe a hundred or two hundred feet of curb, but we didn't replace any of the curb, so, um, I think, I think that the, the strategy, I don't wanna call it a strategy, is to go out to bid, and I'm sorry, if you add up all those roads, you end up with about one point four million dollars, plus or minus. So the strategy would be to, um, put out the four that we planned on putting out. And then for, for Broadway, uh, Marcus and I, we, we had a, um, an email, go to Con Ed and find out what exactly they're paying for and what they're gonna do. So when we hear back from Con Ed about what they're paying for, what they're gonna do, and when we get bids back, we can, I thi- think the board can decide based on the numbers and what Con Ed is doing, how, how to move forward with doing Gallagher or not doing Gallagher. So I think that's, that's where we landed when we crunched all the numbers.
Okay, so it was only ten years, Gallagher, normally we get twenty years out of a road, or twenty, twenty-five, and it was only ten, ten, doesn't seem like it was only ten years ago.
Ten, ten, ten or fifteen, I, I have to look at, um.
Okay. We have a, we have a resident here said it's twenty-five years, so it's, it's, it's due. Okay.
Time, time is going by.
So fast, I know.
Thirty years has come and gone, so.
Yeah. Now, so Bannon is from Portland to Kingsbury. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and then will we be able to do all of Burke Court?
All of Burke Court as well, yes.
Wonderful, that's great. But.
And that hasn't been done since, since we've been working with the villa, I think, I don't think that's been done in thirty years as well. Long time.
That's, that's a need, yeah. So, okay, so we'll see how the bids come in and see what Con Edison is gonna do on Broadway, and then the board can, like you said.
The, the previous scope of work, I, I don't have a looking, but it broke out the valve replacement, is that included in the scope of work? I know it's meant in the body, but in the first paragraph, but I don't see dollar amounts, is that included?
Yeah, it's included, but, um, Marcus and I were talking, that, I think is gonna come out of the water budget, is that correct, Marcus?
Okay, good, so, yeah. Alright, that's a better place.
So that, that's in addition to the, the figures that are on here?
Actually, the figures that are on there include it, but when you go to pay for it, it'll be taken out, so. This, there's a, there's a contingency in there as well, so the va- the valves are, uh, you know, there's two or three valves on each, so it's like twenty thousand dollars on a, on a two hundred thousand dollar, it's a small part of what's there, so it's not, it's not that significant.
Oh, thank you, George. Any other questions and the board members?
Can I, can I clarify something in the Con Edison work? Um, based on the lab board's last meeting, we're going into Con Edison drinking project. I reached out to Con, with Con Edison, Theresa and I had a conference call with Con Edison, doing a discussion, and we brought the issue of, since you're making us delay the project on Broadway, and there is some unsafe conditions, for this a pretty, pretty difficult one side of the road, that, you know, we really feel you should reimburse the village for that repair work, also we'll be fixing it this year, and also that, and also if this, a higher bid next year than this year, you should make up the difference as well. The representative said, that sounds reasonable, but I have to pass out the chain of command, so I just sent him an email requesting an answer to that as quickly as possible. So that way, if the repair work does that, it just gives us more money in the budget to actually have more, more flexibility within the numbers in there. But when they get a response, I think it's only fair, because, um, also we'll be paving the road and wouldn't have any issues at all. So that, so if they get a response, I'll let everybody know, but that's the, the request that went to Con Edison.
Thank you.
Um, I, I see his memo, I have your memo here in there, George. For the roadwork. Okay, mm-hmm. So, um, on the motion, can I should read out, uh, Broadway?
Oh, we have, no, Broadway's not here as, as a repair, the one ninety is the repair.
Oh, okay.
So if, if they don't pay for.
That's why I want, in the future, I wanna have the resolution, so it's clear when we're, um, when we're doing it. You know what I'm saying?
Okay.
Okay. Uh, it just makes it more, it just makes it clear. Okay, so I would like to make a motion to authorize the engineer to prepare specifications and to advertise for bids for the twenty-two, twenty-three roadwork improvement project, um, including the, mentioning the roads that he did, uh, it was Bannon, Henry, Burke, and, um, potentially a section of Broadway.
And Gallagher.
And Gallagher, if we can put that into it. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So it's kind of exciting, we're gonna get a lot of roadwork done this year.
Just, just, all right, George, you, George, I got your email today. I went over, I checked on, uh, I wrote the, the mark out that you guys made, so, you know, it looks like everything's good. I wish I would have been able to go out with you that day, just the, the curb, the curving that you sent me today, um, just, that was just on Gallagher, right?
That's correct, uh, Gallagher from one end to the other. Well, it's actually Gallagher turns into William, so it turns that corner there, so it's, it's actually William and Gallagher, but it, but that's, all that was that two hundred thousand dollar number.
Yeah.
Uh, that, that was for all of that, yeah.
So that's all for Gallagher, for curb.
That's all for Gallagher, yeah, and we, like I mentioned, we can make that decision when we get bids in, so.
Okay, alright, thanks, George.
Yep.
Great. So, um, moving on to the, um, preparing specs for the sewer linings, if you could go over that again, please?
Sure, we were, um, as mentioned at the, um, workshop session, uh, we'd like to use up the ARPA money. Uh, there was roughly two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars worth of ARPA money, and since we're under consent to do some, uh, some, uh, roadwork, I'm sorry, some, um, some, uh, inflow and infiltration, yeah, uh, upgrades, we should, uh, and the manholes are starting to be less, there, there's less leaks in the manholes that we're finding, and more, uh, money would be better allocated towards, um, doing pipe work. So, and then we picked out the, uh, the three areas that during our televi- televising of the pipes were the most, um, compromised, and that was Tate Avenue, um, Tate, um, Albany Post Road and Bleakley. And what we're requesting is tonight from the board, is that we're able to go out to bid on those three, those three sections and use up that grant money that, uh, uh, that was allocated last year.
So we're getting quite a bit done for the, uh, for that this year. Whereabouts on Tate Avenue, is that, George?
Tate, uh, it's between Fourth and, uh, Valerie, it's right between there.
Last year.
Alright. Alright, any other questions from the board for George? And I want you to stay on one minute after this. But let's make a motion to authorize the engineer to prepare specifications and to advertise the grids for sewer linings for the Tate Avenue, Albany Post Road, and Bleakley Avenue area, um, and using the ARPA grant money. So I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And George, um, I, while you're here, I had a, a question again about, uh, Lenz Co., the ramp, and I know we've discussed it, um, but, and I think you guys have gotten some money, what it would cost to either repair it or to remove it. Do you happen to remember what those figures are?
Sure, um, we did reach out to a local contractor, John Pizzella, and he gave us, uh, a price, I wanna say it was around thirteen, fourteen thousand dollars to just take it out and put in, uh, riprap. And then he gave us another price of, uh, another six or seven thousand dollars to put in, uh, a concrete pad. But, um, as we mentioned in the workshop, um, we were meeting with Clean Path to find out what they were doing, uh, where they were coming on shore, so that maybe they could pay for that if they were coming up the boat ramp or they were coming into the cove. And we're meeting with them again, I think we have another meeting coming up with them to discuss, discuss a little more about what their intentions are or their plans are. So, and then in the interim, we also received, uh, DEC and Army Corps permit. So we did receive some permits from the Army Corps and the DEC to, to do this work. So.
Oh, thank you, because I, I had some people asking. Oh, thank you, because I, I had some people asking, and. You know. I just wanted to get back to them with that. Some information, that's all.
Sure.
Any other questions for George? We voted on that, we're good? Okay, thank you, George, for tuning in.
You're welcome, have a good night.
Yeah, George.
So the next is um, to authorize uh the mayor to sign the updated cooperative agreement. So um, I'd like to know the motion to authorize the mayor to sign the updated cooperative agreement among the state of New York, Village of Buchanan and town of Portland. And I have a second.
Second.
On a question. All in favor?
I have to sign it?
Commander has to charge me, guys.
I hand it out to.
Uh, okay, good. You're done, okay, so next are.
Of course you did.
Uh, justice reports for February and for March. Soon as I find them. Got a lot of papers here today. Okay, so. Uh, two thousand two hundred and fifteen dollars, April, I'd just like to read the amount, so people know, one thousand three hundred and seventy-nine. That was March. And then the next one, there was another one. Then there was another one for nine thousand three hundred and fifty, and that was also in March. Oh, I missed one, thirty-three ninety-three was April. Okay, so those are received and filed. Police reports for February and March, I'm going to have uh, Trustee Laker, he's the liaison, I'm gonna have him uh go over that report.
So for the month of February, uh, total calls, one seventy-four. Thirty-one and moving summons of sixty-four. The traffic ticket breakdown, there was twenty-three speeding, twelve disobeyed traffic control, fifteen for miscellaneous violations, and fourteen for equipment, another violation. Uh, just a few other calls that they have, twenty property checks, thirteen medical aided, uh, one mental health. For the month of March, there was a total of one hundred and forty-five calls. Uh, thirty removing summons and ten bargaining summons. Some of the calls they had were twenty-four property checks, uh, eight medically aided, one mental health, uh, five more vehicle accidents, uh, and then there was some animal complaints, five animal complaints, eight assist citizens and three arrests. That was uh, police reports for February and March.
Right, thank you. And uh, highway report is uh, trusty Pat Potty, and it's for February and March.
The household garbage collection for February, uh, sixty-three point four five tons. Bulk and dumpsters, ten point, ten tons, dumpsters, nine tons, bag leaves, point eighty-seven tons of metal, one point nine tons, and not many TVs and monitors were picked up. Uh, in February, though, we did rebuild some catch basins. Um, we did a lot of in-house um, housekeeping in the garage, uh, the, the bathrooms in the garage, uh, we did maintenance at skating rink and, and kept the pavilion clean for that purpose. That's it for February. For March, we had sixty-five tons of household garbage, twenty-two tons of bulk and dumpsters, nine tons of dumpsters, uh, one ton of bag leaves, two point three tons of metal, uh, twenty-three TVs and twelve monitors were picked up as well. Uh, we did some salping of the roads. Um, we. Clean catch basins, uh, fixed catch basins, uh, housekeeping in the village hall and at the garage as well. That's pretty much it for, for uh, March.
Okay, thank you, Trustee Pepper Potty. Uh, the next is a wastewater treatment center, uh, treated wastewater, seven million, seven hundred and sixty-three thousand gallons, sludge, one hundred and forty-eight thousand gallons. Um, on February twenty-second, uh, West Pe- West Suffolk County Department of Health Inspection, no violations reported. That was for February. Uh, for March, nine millions, seven hundred and twenty-eight thousand gallons and thirty-three thousand gallons removed. Uh, for sludge removal, and March eighth, this is, this is something, I don't know how to get this out, this is so critical for us. On March eighth, there was an obstruct, obstructive pump, number one, at the Fourth Street Pump Station. Pulled the pump by crane trucks supplied by Allied Pollution Patrol and removed obstruction of rags and debris. Pump reinstalled and back online with no issues, so. This is, this is the Fourth Street Pump Station, and it's a brand-new pumping station, and we could have had a problem if that got clogged up. So, and we, we put this in the, into the flyer every month. I don't know who is throwing rags and different things into our, our, our sewer lines, but you could cause a lot of damage. If that goes in there and it clogs it up and we, if the pump fails, it's a lot of money, it's not cheap. So I'm asking, please, I, we don't know who's doing it, and we don't wanna get down to a science and figure out who it is, but this is a continuous problem, so. Please stop putting whatever down our sewer line, and just in general, um, I know uh Sharon and Cindy put that in our newsletter every month. Even though those wipes say they're flushable, they are not flushable, so no wipes in the, in, going in the pipe, so please, I'm asking for the village that we, whatever, whoever's doing it, please stop. Okay, uh, building department, reports received and filed. Uh, planning board minutes, February twenty-third, uh, received and filed, zoning board, February eighth and March eighth, received and filed. Uh, Dan is a liaison to the Buchanan engine, so uh, the reports for February and March.
Okay, so for February, we had a total of twelve alarms, zero structure fires, seven EMS assists, uh, two automatic alarms, uh, one neutral aid, and two MVA motor vehicle licenses. For the month of March, we had a total of seven alarms, zero structure fires, four EMS assists, two automatic alarm, one neutral aid. When that was it for?
All right, thanks, Sam. Uh, prosecutor, no report, attorney's report, Stephanie, what do you have up for us this evening?
I don't have much for you, uh, the only thing I wanted to mention was that uh, the steep slopes statute that we're amending, I'm gonna have that out this month, and I would ask if you put it on for the workshop, so I'd like George to join us. So I will pass that around soon, you know, so you have it ahead of time. Um, great. And the only other thing with the new prosecutor and the old prosecutor, I've been in touch with both of them, and they are transitioning fairly well now, working together.
That's good.
Um, yeah, and I'm in contact with both of them, so they've, they've transferred some files and they're working on it, so, great, anyway. Looking long, that's all I have, all right, good, thanks.
Administrators report, Marcus, what do you have for us?
Uh, took a couple things, we discussed it at the last workshop as well, just for the public information. Uh, Tate Avenue is gonna be rehabilitated by Con Edison, I'd like to repeat myself, no, be, no surprises in the future. Soon as I get the, uh, the timeline for that, I'll let the board know, we'll put it on, put it on the website, we'll put it on Facebook, email blast, everybody. The road is still remain open, um, one way, but um, soon I got a date for that, I'll let everybody know. As we discussed with the approving of the uh, the budget, we're changing the waters, water billing structure. So there will be a billing standout in June, people have received their bill back in April, uh, but there'll be a new bill in June that will cover April and May, and the next bill will be September, covered June, July, and August, so it'll be a three-month bill from this point forward. We have some commercial users who are monthly basis, there'll be change on a quarterly basis as well. Uh, Cindy and Sharon are updating the computer system to get that rolling, um, so that's moving forward. And as we discussed, uh, the last meeting as well, we uh, have a vendor that will be just doing the street sweeping. Uh, I can put it out there, it's on our newsletter as well, but the lower village will be May sixteen, seventeen, and eighteen. The upper village will be May nineteenth, twenty-second, and twenty-third. There'll be notifications again, uh, in, in the areas as well, and Facebook email blast and everything, let people know that, please to keep your, um, cars off the road so that we can clean the streets properly. So we'll keep on getting that notification as much as possible, so which is, which is good news. So we got a lot, a couple things happening in doing spring and summer, and all good news, so. And then I guess we got some stuff in the executive session, that's it, thank you.
Thank you. All right, trustees reports, who am I gonna start with? How about you, Anthony?
Okay.
What do you got for us?
I don't have much really, you know, it's, last week we had a meeting, so I pretty much said everything I'd say. Uh, the good thing, uh, we have the AMS project coming into town, and it's exciting for all of us, uh, but we do have a pub, the public hearing we just scheduled for the sixth, which I do, you know, recommend, if you have anything to say or questions, please come out and, and make that clear, so we can all be comfortable with this decision we're making. This is a very big decision in this village, and hopefully it's gonna make this village uh, um, stronger and, and, and we'll have a uh, it'll be exciting for us to move into the future. So, that's really all I have, just go out and ask your questions.
Sure, thank you. All righty, trustee, trustee Bob, what do you got for us?
Okay, well, first I'll try to talk slower. I do have to have it probably fast and more clear. But I don't have a couple things, uh, I agree with Anthony saying, yeah, one of these, I wanted to get involved with the board number one, because it's coming up, I think it's a big thing, and great, even though it's changed some of the way that we've been doing, looking for projects, I think, in a certain way direction. But it's May, we've had lots of April showers, so hopefully a lot of May clouds. But when, with May comes Mother's Day, like, we wish everyone a happy Mother's Day, or Mom down there, a happy Mother's Day. I can say that without getting in trouble. And uh, Memorial Day Parade, uh, for those of you who don't know that, the River Plank Month was at Buchanan always shared the duties of doing Memorial Day Parade. This year it's River Plank, it's gonna, gonna be on Monday, May twenty-ninth. Line of ten thirty, and River Plank Firehouse, and I believe it's ending up down in the river. And uh, only other thing I wanted to talk about quickly is uh, can engine company, volunteer if needed, not just, and you can, but everyone. So if you're a member of the community, you wanna get involved and help out in your community and, and uh, training's included with all this stuff, so contact a member of fire department, there's usually people here on Monday nights for drill night, and you can call their phone number, which I'm not sure if I know their number, I got, to be honest, but I believe it's nine one four, seven three seven, oh three four four. That sounds about right, not nine one one for that, so that's all I have right now, thank you.
All right, thank you, yeah, I know, throughout the whole state, there are locally volunteers, and they're really down. Steve Laker, what do you have for us?
Uh, it's just, I'll be brief as well, but just echo what uh, trustee Pat Potty had said, just encourage the residents to please come out during the sixth, and uh, you know, present your questions in regards to the AMS project, it is something that's very vital for the, the village going forward. Uh, the other thing I wanted to say was, you know, there's the building on the corner of White Street and Albany Post Road that we'd mentioned a couple uh, months ago, I have your report that Marcus sent us an email, uh, they are applying for, for a permit for the roof repair, so be happy to see that ice or cleaned up. And uh, the only other thing I have is uh, please remember that the education committee has their plan sale on the twelfth. Please come out and support them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And Dan, what do you have up for us?
Uh, well, first off, I just wanted to say that I, I um, I was abstaining from voting for the hiring of a seasonal health to the boys or my uh, my sons, um, so I wanted to clarify that. Um, I did um, reach out to the school board in, in relation to um, the concern about um, Memorial Day services being uh canceled, um, but what I found out was that the services aren't actually being canceled. They're just, uh, they're afraid of safety concerns with taking the kids off of um, campus, uh, due to, you know, the recent shooting in Tennessee, and I guess there was some false shooter reports uh, up in uh, Orange County, Sullivan County, so the district, you know, I watch for safety of the student body, that they would um, limit it to being on the premises, but they, they will have some kind of ceremony recognizing Memorial Day. And that's really it.
All right, good, thanks for following up with that, Dan.
Absolutely.
I guess it's my turn, huh? Okay, so um. First thing, yeah, first thing I, I wanna mention is um, last Thursday was the uh, Indian Point De-Commissional Oversight Board Meeting, and um, we, we really need to join together as a community, um, there is no one working with the Village of Buchanan. There is no elected official from either the town, the state, federal, that has contacted the Village of Buchanan and asked what our thoughts are. So this is not good. So I, the village really needs your support, and you really need to come out and help with this. Um, what's happening is they want to, and I've mentioned this before, where they um, their recommendation, the anti-nuclear people and other groups have decided that um, the water should not be put into the Hudson River, that's been done sixty years. Um, the EPA was at this meeting and said that the water is not toxic. You know, uh, there's reports that are done, there's, you know, things are documented over the last sixty years. So their alternative is to put these tanks on the property, and these tanks have been known to break, and um, they also bent from the top. So whatever's in those tanks will be airborne, or they will spread out across the property. So we really need the village residents, the tri-village to step up, this is something that's going to affect us. If they do push to do that, we will never develop that property. So um, we have a, I will be buying T-shirts at my own expense, and um, there are going to be no tanks, no thanks, so that's going to be the theme going forward. Um, I'm going to ask the board if um, you know, for the next, the next meeting, if we can also uh, spend some money and get some um, some posters to put out there. Um, this way, uh, we have to raise awareness of what's going on, because we don't get a lot of people that come to our meetings, so I don't think a lot of people are aware of what's happening. Also, uh, what's a very important thing is, um, they're pushing for the state to not allow the discharge, but the state only covers the speedies permit, the discharges into the river, they do not cover the, any radiological. Um, so if you listen to all the different possibilities, the best poss- possibility is is to discharge. So I'm, I'm gonna take a lot of heat for everything that's happening now, because um, yeah, it's gonna get ugly, because they were very upset that I wasn't following along with the uh, the uh, agenda. But uh, you know, I, I work for the Village of Buchanan, this board works for the Village of Buchanan, and we have to do what's right for the Village of Buchanan. So tomorrow evening at seven o'clock, and we're taping it also, we are going to have a meeting, um, I've asked um, Richard Baroni, who is the vice president of the site, to come in to explain what the process is. So the, the liquid does not go from the spent fuel tank into the river, it's processed. And I've also asked uh, Dave Lockbaum, who is an independent uh, nuclear scientist with a lot of background, to come and talk to us about what are the different options to do with that water. And certainly, the one in the storage tank, that is not an option. Uh, Richard Becker had suggested that it would go uh, into, uh, shipped out to sea and dropped into the middle of the sea. But, you know, let's talk about environmental justice there, but anyhow, um, as it was discussed last week, that is not an alternative either, there's international laws, and you just can't drop garbage in the middle of the ocean or any kind of, and you can't just dump anything anywhere. So there's only a few options, and um, but like I said, there are no elected officials that are contacting the village or asking the village what their thoughts are. So. We have to defend the village, otherwise we're gonna end up with tanks, so. Tomorrow night will be that meeting, and it should be very informational. Tomorrow night will be that meeting, and it should be very informational, and, um. We've got a fight on our hands. Uh, let's see, the next thing I wanted to discuss was, um. Oh, the stairs. They're working on, the highway department's working on the stairs by the pool. And it, they were not in good shape, so they're really, they're really looking good, they're not done yet, so if you have a chance, drive by, look at them, they look, they look great. And the only other thing is, I'm gonna ask the board, are they, is anybody going to the nightcom meeting next Thursday in Pleasantville? It's at six o'clock.
I probably can make that.
I think that would be lovely.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, really? Alright, we gotta double check, make sure, you know, if you're, if you're not getting it, next Thursday, yes. So what I wanted to mention is, I am going to be sworn in officially as the president of the Westchester Municipal Officials Association.
Then I will definitely be.
So, um. Yeah, it's Thursday, the eleventh, so, um, you know, they do, they do a lot of good work, um, with that involved in the housing thing. Because somebody needed to come in with some type of common sense. And, um, you know, the WMOA did a fantastic job, and now we're moving on to civil service. Because anyone that's ever dealt with civil service knows that's a nightmare. So we're, we're addressing that next, so. Um, just wanted to mention that, and, uh. That's what we have going on, we're, we're real busy here, guys, we're just real busy with, um, the, the things going on at the Indian Point Properties. Is a full-time job in itself, so.
Check my email, I'm not sure if I have that.
Okay, if not, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll give you the information.
Pick me up, Dan.
We should get a boss. Um, anyhow, uh, so, comments from the floor? Any comments from the floor?
Eileen? There we go.
Okay, um, I was on that D O B, three and a half hour meeting last Thursday also. Uh, yes, there is a battle, uh, that we have to, um, address. I was not happy with Harkum, Levinburg, um, Borja, or Becker. Um. Unfortunately, they speak, but we are being ignored, um, and disrespected. So I would say to the village residents, whatever we can do, because that, uh, May sixth. Rally of thousands of people that are coming through for plank. Um, heaven forbid that does become a thousand people. Or more, I don't know where they're gonna be going, um. It's insightful, and, um, it's, that's my opinion. Inciting, uh, a division and also, um, hatred. But. That what it may, uh, I look forward, I won't be able to listen to that meeting tomorrow, but I wanted to make sure it was recorded, Teresa, because. Uh, there is a school board meeting, I believe, and there are school board parents. And candidates that need to hear that, so I will be forwarding that to my daughter-in-law. And whoever else I can contact, so that they will be able to watch that. Uh, because they are also, uh, concerned about the discharge. And. I was glad to hear that Dr. Lorio had reestablished that grant. That, um, the former superintendent had let go. So that there will be air monitoring at BV, so I hope that will help out, um, along with everything else. Um, and, um, I wanted to ask, aside from that. I wanted to ask, how long is that dredging, uh, that a P-Skill is doing with trucks traveling down Broadway to Sixth Street?
Till November.
So it's already started and it'll end in November?
June.
Yeah, sometime in June, they're starting in May, but June is gonna be when they start.
June, November, so how does, um, paving Broadway? Come into that, whether, uh, Con Ed does whatever they do, and you do whatever you do. How does those trucks going through November impact Broadway paving?
Well, I don't think the board feels it's, it's proper to do the paving we have planned to do. If it's going, we're gonna have that much more truck traffic on it, like we're wasting our money.
Right.
So, um, Marcus has been in contact with Con Edison, and he's, uh, has asked them. To, um, to do some paving there, so otherwise, it's just gonna deteriorate more than this.
Okay, alright.
But we're not gonna invest village taxpayer dollars to have more trucks to, to rip that up.
Right, I just, I was just wondering what the plan was, um. There is also. Something that Harkum is bringing, uh, he's got a bill. And Anthony, what prompted me to think about that is on the waste, um, highway department with all the tonnage of waste. Uh, garbage and et cetera. Um, Theresa, do you know about that law that he put forth that has to do with food? And I'm presuming garbage.
Food scrap, it's a food scrap program?
Uh. A lot of communities are getting on board with a food scrap program.
Okay, does that impact garbage?
Oh, of course, yes. You gotta separate all your food from your, from your solid waste. Uh, uh, we, they did it, just to let you, just to know, when I was in Rye, they did it in Rye, and Rye Brook, Harrison. Um, it's a totally separate contract with a separate hauler, uh, you have to separate all your food waste from your regular garbage. And that has to be a separate container and separate pickup, uh, and then it goes to a company who'll pick that up and then take it to their site for composting. Um, so it is, uh, it's, it's interesting, because you actually have more trucks on the road and more gas wasted, the bigger the food waste. So, but at the same time, the staying creates, it creates, um, compost, so. Um, if it, municipalities have been doing to do it, doing it voluntarily, uh, so I, as, and I, there was no, there was not one location. To do it, so everybody had to do a separate contract, so. Um, that's why it was, I, I haven't read the new law, and the new law requires then to have a transfer station that everybody takes their food scrap to. So, I don't know what the details of that is, but I know they did it in some other communities. Yeah, it's, it's not mandatory, it's, it's all voluntary, and they. They, they handle the food, if you, if you wanna put out food scraps, they'll handle it for you. As of right now, but, uh, I don't know what this new law is gonna, is gonna say. Uh, and Eileen, it was a different, it was a biodegradable bag, uh, separate container. Um, so it is a little bit more complicated, but like I said, it'll be a total separate pickup that has to be done, has to be separated.
Right, so for the counties that, or for the cities that did it down county, are they still doing it?
I know. Voluntary. It's voluntary, yeah, but I know, I know Rye did it, Harrison did it, Rye Brook did it, uh, I haven't been there. Another year, but they've been doing it for a while, and Anthony just said White Plains does it. Well, White Plains has the facility where you can drop. Oh, drop it off, okay. Yeah, so it's, it's the same thing, it's voluntary, I think on, on May sixth, that Waterstock, they'll be handing out those bags. You can probably pick one up there.
Okay, alright, okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Eileen, yeah, facts, uh, you know, I think that the most frustrating thing is the facts are coming out about. Everything with the water discharge, but it's, it's being ignored.
I'm sure.
Um, the five hundred thousand was always there for the school, for the monitoring. So, um, I, I think he's asking for different monitoring, the superintendent now. Um, and you mentioned one other thing that I, I do wanna say, at the beginning of the meeting. Um, there was an announcement made. That two hundred fifty thousand dollars out of the Entergy Fund that was. Supposed to go to the Village Buchanan for a sewer upgrade. Um, that has been awarded to the plumber and steam fitters local twenty-one for welding training.
Oh, that's the different amount there for the driver ed?
That's quarter of a million.
No, that was, okay, the Teamsters got for the dry, for the C E L training, so now this is a new award. Out of the Entergy money.
Hmm.
Um, going to that fund.
Oh, interesting, oh, that's, now, I was confused, okay.
Teresa, are you saying they took?
And, um, this has been a really tough process with the Entergy money. Um, we were supposed to get. Most of that money originally. And Entergy was in control of the money, the state and Entergy were in control of the money. Once Entergy left the state and gave it to New York State. New York State took possession of the money, and I have been told they are in complete control of it, and they will tell us how it will get. Um, divided, so. As you can see, you know, I mean, I have no problem, the Teamsters got money, they now, you know, the local, the steam fitters got money. But the state has plenty of money, they're good at giving money away, but they chose to take it out of that fund.
Right, what I heard though was that, uh, the former superintendent had let that grant, uh, passed the. The due date or whatever date he needed, and Lorio, Loro had. Uh, re-upped that grant, that's how he got that five hundred thousand.
Yes, yes, you're right, that's correct.
Right.
They certainly weren't gonna take five hundred thousand away from the school.
Absolutely not.
So, but thank you, I mean. So it's, it's a fight, it's a fight right now, it's, um, you know, we're being ignored, we're being told what should go on that property. Um, and, uh, no, that's not how that's gonna be, we're also being told. From the anti-nuclear groups, um, for the environment, not only wanna say environmentalist, because we're all environmentalists. But, um, they have suggested many, many, many times that we should have, um, solar panels over there on that property. Um, sixty years, we have not been able to have access to that property, if you put solar panels on it. I will guarantee it will, it will be fenced in and you will never use that property ever, ever again. So, I really need, you know, I need everyone to come together, uh, we need to, we need to fight this. I do wanna thank one person in the audience right now, Lisa Wentz. Who is very familiar with everything going on, and has gotten involved and has, you know, been doing a great job. Um, with, with this, so, you know, we'd like to have more residents get involved with this. So that we can be a, a force to be reckoned with. Okay, that's all I'm gonna say today, I'll say more tomorrow, so. Um, if there's no other comments from the floor, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel and negotiations. Can I have a second? All in favor? Alright, thank you, everyone, have a great Buchanan day.